This is the Council Budget and Appropriations Committee. I'm Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. We are joined. Councilman Leon Pinkett, 7th District. Are you guys getting feedback from me?
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Councilman. You can go on mute.
Is that better? Okay, Councilman Eric Costello, 11th District, Chair of the Committee, joined by Council President Brandon Scott, Councilman Leon Pinkett, 7th District, Vice Chair of the Committee, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District Member of the Committee, Councilman Pinkett, 7th District, Councilman Isaac Getze Schleifer, 5th District, Member of the Committee. Councilwoman Dani McCray, 2nd District. Councilman Zee Cohen, 1st District, on behalf of Mayor Jack Young, is Matt Stegman and Nina Themelis. On behalf of Council President Brandon Scott is Kalen Young and Dominic McIlholy. Staff to the Committee is Marguerite Curran. And it looks like we're also joined by Richard Crummerich from Council Services. Councilman Bill Henry from 4th District is on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sir. Think I got all the council members. We are here for the monthly Budget and Appropriations Committee Oversight Hearing for the Police Department. With that, Commissioner Harrison, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Good evening, Council President and Mayor Lex Scott, Vice President Middleton, Chairman Costello, Vice Chairman Pinkett, and Members of the Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you this evening. With me today are members of my executive team and command staff. We're joined by Deputy Commissioner of Operations Michael Sullivan, Deputy Commissioner of Administration Jim Gillis, Deputy Commissioner of Compliance Danny Murphy, Deputy Commissioner of Public Integrity Bureau Brian Nato, Colonel Cherie Briscoe, Chief of the Criminal Investigations Division, Colonel Richard Worley, Chief of the Patrol Division, my Chief of Staff Eric Malanson, Deputy Chief of Staff Andy Mulligan, our Chief Financial Officer Charlotte Graham, Chief Technology Officer Woody Davis, Managing Director of Data-Driven Strategies Drew Vauden, and Director of Governmental Affairs Michelle Worsley. Before I hand it over to the staff to give a more in-depth update as to the budgetary and administrative state of the department, I'd like to give a very brief overview. Deputy Commissioner Sullivan will go into more detail, but much like the rest of the country, we are seeing an uptick in COVID infections within our department. We certainly have strong protocols. We have inspections and audits to ensure compliance. But he'll be able to go more in-depth about what we're doing about it and how to prevent the spread and help our members along the way. Now, with respect to overtime and spending, I think we're doing well trying to meet the new target that the council has set for us. But we're coming up slightly above that rate. Now, this can be attributed to the fact that Judge Bredor has mandated that we stay on course with the training schedule, despite the cut of that particular line item. Moreover, as I stated in a previous hearing, we can continue course at this rate of spending only if all things remain constant. For example, if there's an event, whether it's more mass protest, like we saw this summer, or an increase in COVID infections internally from the department, or an entirely unseen occurrence that we have to respond, then our rate of spending will increase and will likely go over our budget. However, we will continue to be as fiscally prudent as possible, as we have since I've been Commissioner, and will closely monitor our spending. On the staffing and recruitment front, we're seeing some positive movement over last year. At the first two months of this year, we experienced much higher than normal attrition that is mainly attributed to the first grouping of officers who reached their 25th year under the change retirement eligibility rule. That number did stabilize throughout the rest of the year. Even with the deficit caused by those first two months, the good news is that hiring is up from the last year. As of today, we are at a net plus of hiring over attrition. We will see where we land next month for the entire year. Of course, certainly there'll be more separations in December, but this is a positive development, and I remain optimistic. A lot of hard work went into this that should be recognized. Last year, we made some personnel changes to the recruitment section. We have doubled down on our digital marketing campaign, which has nearly doubled the number of applications we receive. We need to keep our foot on the gas and go farther and faster. But as of today, we seem to be going in a much better direction. Lastly, on the technology front, it's really one of the biggest bright spots in the department. I don't want to speak for Judge Bredor or the monitoring team, but they praise the pace of the modernization of our technology infrastructure. I'll let Woody Davis, our Chief Technology Officer, go into it in more detail when the time is appropriate about where things stand with the implementation of these upgrades. And I'll end by saying we've had an increased focus on repairing the administration and inner workings of the department. As I will go into it in the next hearing, I firmly believe that much like a vehicle, if it's not properly serviced, it'll tend to break down. These may seem like mundane topics, but these administrative support services are as crucial to the crime fight as anything. We will continue to apply the most professional and best management principles to these functions as we have throughout my team. With that, I'll hand it off to Deputy Sullivan, our CFO Charlotte Graham, our Deputy Commissioner Gillis, and Chief Davis to go over the presentation. And thank you again.
Good evening, everybody. Can we bring up the first screen is Deputy Commissioner Sullivan. Chairman Costello and councilmembers, thank you for letting us be here to present tonight. Thank you, Chairman. Share the screen here with the COVID. And like the Commissioner said, we are in a situation that is very similar to what the rest of the country is experiencing and seeing increases in COVID infections within our ranks. Currently, we have 94 of our members that are quarantined. That brings our total quarantine during this entire event to 1,477. And we have 257 confirmed cases. You can see with the vast majority of those folks who were quarantined are already back to work. What we have noticed is since October 1st, we've seen a 31% increase in COVID confirmed cases. So of that 257, 31% of those cases have happened in the last two months. We have given clear guidance to our folks. We also are using our audits and inspections and our comp stat to be able to show those audits and inspections and determine deficiencies. And the police commissioner has given a PCM directing members when and where to wear a mask. So while we are in this challenging environment, we're navigating the best we can. You can see our PPE numbers below there. We are well-stocked to be able to deal with this going into which will be the most challenging months as we go forward. So if there is any questions about COVID, I'll pass it on to the overtime of budget.
Good evening, everybody. Jim Gillis here, and I apologize if the camera on my computer is not working for some reason, which could be a good thing perhaps. But the next slide that you see here piggybacks off of what Deputy Sullivan was just talking about regarding to COVID. But you'll see that it has a cost related to COVID and protests. And if you look on the left side of this slide, COVID costs in terms of personnel totals $1.6 million, both in the last fiscal year leading into this fiscal year. So basically, the summertime forward to where we are now. And with the second to the bottom-left COVID non-personnel, the total value is $874,000. And what that represents are expenses related to COVID, whether it's PPE purchases or technology purchases. And if we can move on to the next slide, that delves more deeply into those specific expenditures that total $874,000. And you'll see the pie chart there, which breaks down the percentages of what we are spending our money on to maintain operations and try to maintain the level of service throughout the pandemic. And a lot of that has to do with teleworking. That's where the big technology piece and the laptops come in. If you could move on to the next slide, please. Moves into overtime expenditures. And this visual here again shows us moving from April to where we are today. And it shows the number of dollar amounts that are being spent on overtime. The dark blue, you'll see, is the regular overtime work during those specific pay periods. And the pay periods move forward in chronology across the bottom of the chart. And the light blue are any type of additional overtime work specifically related to Commissioner days. And those are five days a year that are usually where we need to employ the entirety of the police force in the agency. Or there was a lot of protests that we had to cover this summer, obviously. COVID, any protests revolving around the elections that were going on, those drove up the numbers of overtime because more people were working. And then the red dotted line are the goals that we set in conjunction with City Finance and Bureau of Budget Management Research for us to maintain our overtime to meet our budget goals going into next year. And as the Commissioner stated in his opening remarks, you know, we really, really worked diligently on this overall as in the agency. And I think the results have been pretty good. We've got a lot more work to do, of course. But also mentioned by the Commissioner here, it puts us in a little bit of a tighter spot than we ordinarily would be. We don't have as much cushion because some of the money that was budgeted for overtime for FY '21 obviously was reduced going into this fiscal year. But if you look at the red line, that's our target goal. We've done a pretty decent job of maintaining it. And I do have some statistics just to mention. If you look at each of the pay periods, just going in the FY '21 pay period one, which was either July 4th going forward, we were 15% below this fiscal year in overtime spending from where we were last year. The following pay period after that, pay period two, 48% below where we were the year before. Next pay period, 49% below the year where we were before, and so on and so forth. You'll see that the numbers go up slightly again at the end of where we just were a couple of weeks ago. Again, that revolves around Halloween and the election. If you could move to the next slide, please. This is, again, a similar slide showing the number, the amount of overtime work in relation to our goals that were set. It speaks for itself. It's a visual. Again, we can send you the specific numbers if that is helpful, of course. But we thought that the visual is an easier way to digest the information. If you could go to the next slide, please. This is our budgeted expenses for each year over the last five years, and then how much we have spent as an overall agency each year over the last five years. And if you look going all the way back to fiscal year 2016, the red number that you will see is how much we overspent over our budget each of those years. And you can see that as we have moved forward in time, we have drastically cut going over our budget. And that is due to a lot of the controls that we have put in place here in the last two years, and also a lot of the collaboration that we have had from City Hall and City Finance and our other partners and stakeholders in city government to work through all of this. And frankly, what it comes down to is effective performance management and utilizing goals and setting goals and looking at the data to decide where we're actually spending the money and where we aren't and where we don't need to. And if you look at the end of FY '20, it's the first time in five years that we actually came in under budget. And that is in line, again, with the previous slides about overtime and our spending with regard to overtime hours and the working. And it is worth noting, I'm getting a text here on my phone, that we did get a supplemental for COVID in FY '20. And Charlotte Graham, our Chief Financial Officer, can address any questions with regard to that. If you can move on to the next slide, please.
Jim, Deputy Commissioner. Deputy Commissioner.
Yes.
What is the total appropriated level of overtime for fiscal '21? Is it 27 million?
I believe that is correct.
Charlotte, can you confirm that?
Yes, it's 27 million, sir.
All right, thank you. Jim, go ahead. Thank you.
And that is it for the budget portion, unless there are any specific questions. And Chief Graham obviously is on here and does know daily in the weeds. And frankly, a lot of this hard work is from her. And so if there are any questions with regard to that, we can go through them now or go through them later. Otherwise, the next section is about staffing and recruiting. And I'll continue with the staffing and recruiting again.
Chairman Costello, this is Councilman Pinkett. I had just a quick question, just for clarity.
Yo, go ahead.
Deputy Commissioner, one of the graphs had, related to COVID, tactical equipment. What would that be? It was 16% of the pie for tactical equipment.
Tactical equipment involves any type of equipment, what we generally call the mobile field force here. It's an operational expense to ensure that our officers are able to meet any type of unrest that turns out to be more than they could ordinarily handle with regular uniforms and regular equipment. And so that involves additional gear to keep folks safe and things along those.
And that's related to COVID?
Yeah, I think, so, councilmember, this is Chief Staff Malanson. Part of the concern early on was a potential run on grocery stores, other places, venues that we were concerned about being soft targets in a series of panic kind of. Had a preparedness plan that we needed to be. And it was kind of an eligible expense that we could find reimbursement for, so.
And what Chief Malanson is describing is exactly right. You recall and go back to the very beginning of the pandemic, there was frankly a lot of fear that was happening. And there was a run on supply demands for regular consumers that live out there. And there was a, this is a nationwide trend. There was a fear that there would be, there would be perhaps some violence or problems that revolve around the limited supply of resources people have to just make it to next week.
And what's the dollar amount that that 16% represents?
I'm seeing if I have it right here with me. If I don't have it, clearly go back on, I have it in front of myself. I would certainly get that for you. We have it broken down, just not in this slide presentation. We will get that dollar amount for you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm moving on to staffing and recruiting and hiring. As Commissioner said in his opening remarks, you know, there are positive signs with regard to where we are headed in staffing of the agency. We have overall goals set that were budgeted for. Obviously, we're at 2640. Right now, score and strength, we're at 2234. This just gives a breakdown of where people are and what their assignments are essentially, both civilian and sworn. If you can go over one more slide, please. And then to what the Commissioner did speak of, this is the last five years, or six years, excuse me, of hiring and attrition within the agency plus the average for both hiring and attrition per month for each year. And as he noted in his opening remarks, as of today, actually, we are at a net positive of hires by three for this year. And where we are projected to go this year is we have an ambitious goal of hiring, finishing the year with 217 hires. And we have folks who are in the pipeline, who are both coming on board throughout the rest of November and then through December, obviously. But what is important about this is that for us, this represents the turning of the corner, something that we have all talked about exhaustively over the last four or five years, about how we, the fundamental basis of attacking crime in Baltimore is to have the proper staffing levels. And without hiring robustly enough to fulfill those obligations of the staffing levels to respond to the call volume, we are gonna have our time clawing our way out of the woods and will always be dependent on overtime and other ways to flex the agency's strength. And so this represents to us a turning of the corner on that narrative in a positive way. And I think that something that should be noted is that this really represents fantastic work by the folks of the agency because of what is going on with the pandemic and where we are nationally. It is not an easy time to recruit people to become police officers in the United States. And so I think that a lot of credit is due with the team that is on here today and the folks in the agency on being able to outpace attrition this year, especially of all years. And so there is no doubt a lot of work to do to continue to build on this number. But optimistically, we are certainly headed in the right direction. And the numbers are speaking for themselves, just to be clear. Right there. If you can move on to the next slide, please. This is the breakdown of demographics for police officers, police officers that's hired through today. And, you know, we still struggle with hiring of more women, even though our marketing campaign has been targeting women. But we are expanding the number of folks who we are hiring that are who are reflective of the community that we serve. That is another goal that has been heavily invested in by this agency and by this team. And that is, those are the primary goals for the marketing campaign, to make the agency more reflective of the community we serve and hire folks who are frankly from the community. And so with the number of hires that are coming in, we are starting to see that. I think that one slide that was left out inadvertently, which will be the next slide on here, is about the applications that are coming in and also the demographic breakdown on applications. I do not think it's included in the presentation, and for that, I apologize. I will have it sent, slide sent to you as soon as I'm done speaking here. But just some data points on there. There have been 7,132 applications so far this year. And just some of the demographic breakdown, 49% of them are African-American applicants versus 28% are Caucasian, 2% Hispanic or Latino, 4% are Asian. And 45% of the applications we received this year as a half are from Baltimore City residents. And again, what those data points are telling us is that our investments in the marketing campaign and who we're trying to hire are paying off in the breakdown and the data coming in about the applications. And then if you translate that into the hires, we're hiring more than we were, we're losing, and hiring more than we have in the years past. All of these things are really positive indicators. And the more we work through this and the more time that we have, the more we will feel better about it, especially if these data points continue to trend in that same positive direction. But we feel strongly that, again, that the hard work that has been put in and the investments that have been put in are really starting to pay dividends. And we're seeing that in the numbers. If you could go to the next slide, please. And I think that's it for hiring and recruitment as well. Basically, there was the administrative bureau stuff. If there are any questions, obviously, we have to be here to answer any of them, unless you want to jump into technology and any questions at peace.
Technology's fine. Who's that? Or is that feedback for me?
Chairman Costello, I do have a question about the recruiting.
And Vice Chair Pinkett, before I go to that, I'm gonna turn the hearing over to you, to Chair for the time being. But go ahead, take it away. It's now doubly yours.
Thank you. Deputy Commissioner, I was, you mentioned seven, I guess a little bit over 7,000 applications and 45% were Baltimore residents.
Yes, sorry about that. I couldn't find the mic on mute button there. That's correct, yes.
And so what, I was looking at the other number of, I think it was 62. Did those 62 Baltimore hires come out of that 7,132 applications?
Most likely, I can't say for certain without doing a deep dive into each individual case. But we know that the time that it takes from someone to apply to being hired here, we, you know, that's one of our goals. We've drastically reduced the time that it takes to do that. And so most likely, unless it was something higher in the very beginning of the year, if led over from last year, most likely, those hires that you're seeing from Baltimore City are from this applicant pool. But we can, we can really do a deep dive if that's helpful.
Yeah, it would be helpful. I mean, my math could be completely off, but it seemed like it was of the Baltimore hires, and this is probably the case, well, of the Baltimore hires, less than 2% of the applications actually translated into hires. Is that, is that typical? Is that below, is that below average as relates to application to hire?
Councilman, this is Commissioner Harrison. That's about right. We, our department, like other departments similar to us that have very stringent and rigorous hiring standards, it's slightly above 2%. It goes between 2% and 3% higher ratio for application hire.
Yeah, and I'm, look, I'm being challenged over here with my math, but it seemed like the percentage for Caucasian applications are significantly higher than either Baltimore or African-American applicants. And I was just curious that we're looking into, is there a reason why?
There, this is Jim Gillis. And there are certain reasons why, certainly, as the Commissioner just said, we have really high standards here for hiring officers. But some of the standards are dictated by the state. One of those standards that are dictated by the state is marijuana usage. And that's something that we've been trying to change and will continue to try to change to lower the threshold in terms of recency, how many years ago you used marijuana. And prohibit you from being considered for hire or making it through the process. And so without knowing about specific cases, that could be, for example, one of those anecdotal reasons why, you know, certain demographic pools or city residents or whatever the slice of the pie is, might have more of a barrier to getting through. And so that is something we have recognized, and it is something that we are certainly taking a, not just a look at, but pushing to have changed so that we can open up the universe to make it through the pipeline. The other thing that's really important that I want to note here is that on this call with us as part of our team, we have an Equity Officer who is part of the agency now. That is something absolutely that is within their purview and portfolio to look at those types of reasons why there might be discrepancies between different demographics and making it through certain parts of the background process or the application process. And so part of hiring him was to help us figure out what we need to do to ensure that everyone is treated fairly and equitably to make it all the way through the process. And we can accomplish that goal, the overall goal, of hiring more people from Baltimore City so that we are actually hiring people who are from and representing the community that we serve.
Yeah, I mean, it seems as though we will never get to a place where we increase the number, well, I mean, increase significantly the number of local hires as well as African-American hires. And until we get to, you know, the root of why there's a big difference between out-of-city hires and Caucasian hires, there seems to be a pretty big significant, I mean, a significant difference between the percentage. And so am I to assume correctly that we keep data on the number of hires that, or number of candidates that are not hired because of marijuana use?
Yes, we should have that data, and I can, I can have you division pull that.
I think that would be important for, you know, for us to see the whole picture, especially if there is a, an effort to, you know, remove that as a barrier to hiring. I think you have to have the data to show that that's the reason why people aren't being considered.
Absolutely, and, you know, I certainly agree with that. And I think that all of us, all would agree with that. And that is sort of the model that has been brought here, frankly, by the Commissioner, is that, you know, we have used data a lot in the pie specifically for crime, but not so much for the rest of the diagnostic of the entire agency. And in order for us to make smart decisions about how to manage this place, we need the data. And so I totally agree with you on that. And that is an excellent point, but that is exactly what we're doing as well. And I just think it is also worth noting, one of the competing issues that we are faced with when it comes to hiring is, yes, our overall goal is absolutely to, you know, hire locally, but we also just need to hire generally too. And so we are, of course, looking for candidates all over the country with the focus on Baltimore. And so we are, of course, looking for candidates all over the country with the focus on Baltimore. But that is a, that's a reality that exists is that, you know, we have to expand the geographic universe in order to get to the numbers where we need to get to. And even though it's positive right now, it's still, as of today, just three people above attrition. So it is that constant climb in battle with that that we are dealing with.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for responding to that. I believe we can move on to technology now.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm, Councilman.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, I wanted to, if you could go back one screen, Jim. I was, I was, I know that I've missed the last couple of these monthly updates, so I'm sorry if this was something that was explained previously. But previous incarnations of this chart also showed, had a column to show applications. And I'm just, I was thinking specifically of some of Councilman Pinkett's questions about, you know, why are the percentage rates what they are for different demographics? And I was thinking, when you talk about how there are, you know, some reasons for that, but seeing how many people from each demographic applied versus how many we hired of them, I think tends to throw that statistic into sharper relief. So it might be helpful to add that column back in the future versions of this chart.
Absolutely. And Councilman, I apologize for that. And we did, we did cover that a little bit. There is a slide specifically exactly the same as this, but just applications. It just didn't make it into the slide deck. I have the slide right here. We will send it to all of you. And that is on me for sure. And I apologize about that.
Hey, listen, I appreciate your effort in curating the slide deck.
Well, thank Michelle Wiesberger for that because she is like the curator of all of this stuff. Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
And well, Deputy Commissioner, I'm not going to let you off because you caused me to lose a couple of brain cells trying to do math because you didn't put it in the deck.
I appreciate that. And it's harder for me to do math than you. I promise you that.
So if there aren't any other questions, we can move on to technology.
Thank you. I'm Chief Davis, and let's talk a little bit about technology. So our number one project, first bullet for BPD is our records, is modernization of our records management application. We are on track for completing Phase One, which is incident reporting, Q4 FY 21. And also on track for completing Phase Two. This is a two-phase project. Phase Two is case management, and we're looking at that in Q2 FY 2022. Moving on, learning management. A core application needed for improving our learning and training services. We've partnered with Acatus. Acatus has a learning management and training management application that focuses on law enforcement. And we've partnered with them and we're on track for completing and deploying that application, Q3 of FY 21. Great news, though, in proving, in our efforts to improve our communication and information sharing, we've partnered with a company called Evertell that focuses on law enforcement text-based communication. And we fully deployed that to all officers and several of our civilians within the agency to facilitate text-based, improved tech-based communication. Workforce management services, we've partnered with a company called eResource. We're expanding eResource deployment. This application will help us with scheduling and overtime management. There are future plans to have this integrate with Workday so that the schedules that are going to be managed by our staff, our officers and their overtime can then be ingested into Workday in the future. And we're on track for completing eResource deployment, Q2 FY 2021. AB3 Body One camera technology. This is the upgrade to the previous body worn cameras with a lot more features, enhanced battery life. And we've deployed 94% and it may be a little higher now in terms of deploying the technology. And we're on track for completing that by the end of the year. Next bullet is the AT&amp;T FirstNet, which really ties into the, that's really a part of supporting the text-based communication capability that I mentioned up in third bullet. FirstNet AT&amp;T has, AT&amp;T has FirstNet, a responder mobile network designed specifically for first responders. And we've deployed 71% of our mobile devices onto the AT&amp;T FirstNet network. And last, to help improve citizen engagement and information sharing, we have modernized our website. It's very, it's a lot more intuitive, easier to navigate and allows, we believe, citizens an opportunity to get information more clearly, more effectively, and more completely. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Pinkett, can I?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Vice President Middleton.
So I don't know if this particular subject goes in this piece because it's kind of varied. But first of all, I just want to thank Michelle Wiesberger and Commissioner Harris and the whole team for really stepping up and working with the Department of Transportation with all those abandoned vehicles that have been placed all over the city due, mainly being taken advantage of due to COVID. And I know that you're still in the process of getting that done and probably is going to take some overtime and maybe getting that done. And I guess with this technology piece coming up, and I see this abandoned vehicle thing really being a continued problem, is there any efforts, I guess, in trying to, you know, I know there's a process where you got to tag these vehicles. Are you keeping track of this? Are you, you know, I guess anyone can talk on this subject. It's just been, I know it's been really a problem within my district because I have so many auto repair shops and just things that seem to make this problem worse. I had, I had a constituent that had this question to me. Why can't, why does the police have to work with Department of Transportation on this subject? Why can't, when they do their regular, when they, you know, work and do their regular routes, why, it looks like they could see a vehicle and not wait for a constituent to put it on 311. If they see this, why can't they report it and try to get it resolved right away? So I know COVID was part of that. I just, I guess I just need some dialogue on that subject. Because it deals with technology, it deals with working with another agency. You know, there's a lot of missing pieces. I just like to know how you guys are handling it. Who can answer that?
Yeah, I mean, I can help, I can help you out with that. The way, the way it works is that, if a patrol officer, and you can do this, we don't have to wait for constituents to call us and our officers do it not as often as we'd like, but as they're driving around, they see an abandoned vehicle. They can, they can run the tag or if there's no tag on it, they fill out a abandoned vehicle sheet which has a little orange sticker that you'll see on the car. They place it on the car and then they turn the sheet in to their supervisors and that goes to DOT to tow it. The reason we don't tow it right away is if we tow that vehicle, we use one of the medallion tow trucks. And they'll come and they'll charge us the normal fee to tow the car. And then if no one picks that car up, the city gets charged for that tow and all the storage. So we use the city trucks. Once the city tow trucks come and get them, they take them to City Yard. We used all city resources. There's no, there's no funds being used to pay the medallion tow truck driver to get them. And we are doing them. Each district keeps track of them. I know the mayor-elect, when we had an incident in the northwest, we had talked about a few and they have seven vehicles right now ready to be picked up. And each district does their own thing and they send it to, Chief Goodwin is great when we call him and say, hey, we really need this one taken. Because City Yard is full to capacity right now, so it's tough to get cars in because they're not coming out as quickly.
So when you tow these cars, the city is getting charged?
No, if we, if we use a medallion tow truck, like if we, hey, this is abandoned. And we call for a tow truck and they assign, that's the two, that's the delay. Once we send it to the city, Baltimore City tow truck goes and picks it up and then it goes to City Yard. The city has no, no cost in that at all. So if the person doesn't pick it up, we don't have, we haven't spent any money on the car.
Okay.
It's as written off as, or gets auctioned or whatever happens to it if someone doesn't pick it up.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That was some added parts that I didn't realize. So appreciate that and appreciate everything that you continue to do to get these vehicles out of the way.
Yes, there's a lot of them out there.
Thank you, Vice Chair Pinkett.
You're welcome. Are there any more aspects of the presentation? Okay. So at this time, if there are any questions from any of my colleagues, I know this is a little bit difficult as far as finding who has questions, but if you want to either put in the chat or just unmute yourself and if you have a question, we can have questions at this point.
The city council's making sure the cops are doing a good job. Hey. Just got to check and make sure they're doing a good job.
I think, I think somebody's unmuted.
Yeah, someone needs to mute Matt.
Yeah, he's giving a civics lesson at home.
Sorry about that. I will tell everybody on this hearing the same thing that I just told my daughter. Wash your hands.
So am I to assume there's no questions from anyone related to the presentation that we just received? Okay, if there, I don't, I don't have any other questions myself, so I'm, thank you, Commissioner, for this presentation. And so we will place this hearing into recess and then prepare for the Public Safety Committee.